I better start talking. Looks like you guys are waiting for something. Welcome, welcome to the Melville School District Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to do roll call. Jeff Wolman.
Present.
Scott Hugrich.
Present.
He's on the phone. Tori Belkley.
Present.
Jean Predo.
Present.
Pat- Patrick.
Present.
Peggy Hassler, that's me, and Grace is not with us tonight. And we also have, I'd like to welcome our student reps from Melville and Oakville. We have Jenna Jobber and Eric Plaster. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay, communications. Tonight, we are going to welcome all of our students from Washington Middle and Oakville Middle and all of their family and friends, it looks like. Great turnout, thanks for showing up for your kids. Washington Middle would be first. Kelly Roberts? And William Murphy, I guess, maybe?
I'm Eric Thebe. I'm a teacher at Washington Middle School, and we thought we'd giving Jesse Sarah, I've taught him for three years, so it was meaningful for me to be able to give him this award. Jesse embodies the Washington way, showing respect, responsibility, and readiness in all he does. He works hard to ensure his work and the best it can be. Jesse is able to work cooperatively with peers, stepping up to lead when needed, and contributing in any way he can to help the group succeed. He is a well-rounded individual who has a voracious desire to read and learn as much as possible. He's a member of Book Battle, produces monthly videos as part of the WMS publication team, and serves as vice president of the NJHS. On behalf of the eighth grade team and academy, we agree that Jesse is an invaluable member of WMS, and though he'll be missed, we'll miss him as he begins his high school career, we know he'll accomplish great things.
We would like to recognize Lexi Timmerman tonight, who's another eighth grade student at WMS. Lexi's being recognized by the Kiwanis Club of South County as an outstanding student for demonstrating high academic and moral standards and her involvement at school and in community services. Lexi leads her peers at WMS as president of NJHS. She participates in student council, garden club, book battle, and volleyball. Lexi's persistent in her pursuit of her goals. She works to include others. Lexi, we're so proud of you and all your accomplishments.
Next up is Oakville Middle, Mike Salzman and Jason Beatt. And I don't know who else.
I'm a teacher at Oakville Middle School, and I'm here to present the NEA Student of the Month Oakville Award, Oakville Middle School, to Sam Kira. Sam comes into class every day with a smile, ready to work. He's a hard worker who strives to be successful. He's kind to his classmates and always willing to help his classmates succeed as well. Sam consistently follows the Spartan Way of respect, restraint, and responsibility. He takes great pride in his schoolwork, puts effort into everything he does, is always willing to go above and beyond, and most importantly, is always demonstrating kindness towards both staff and students at Oakville Middle School. He's a great leader, always trying to make sure everyone is on track. He's a caring kid, always looking for ways to help others out, and he's respectful to his peers and to the teachers and adults involved. Congratulations, Sam.
Eighth grade glory award winners, if you guys want to step up front right now at this You guys can face your parents or you can face the board, whichever you like to do. It's up to you guys. Facing your parents, all right. So every school year, each of the Melville School District Middle Schools select 14 eighth grade students to receive the Glory of Missouri Award. Their honor, which is bestowed by the Missouri House of Representatives, recognizes students for their demonstration of one of 14 virtues. These virtues are so embedded in the intent of Missouri's legislature, they are engraved in the stone in the House Chamber of the State Capitol in Jefferson City. Tonight, we would like to recognize these 14 students, so when I call your name, just please step forward. Sidney Lee, knowledge. Nathan Zupan, liberty. Ramsey Marcus, equality. Clark Bader, law. Madison Donzie, justice. Josiah Williams, fraternity, he couldn't be here tonight. Katie Jacobs, education. Melinda Barak, progress. Paige Heights, honor. Corinne White, truth. Jack Navin, virtue. Michael Schiffer, temperance. Chloe Ruth, enterprise. And Madeline Van Deven, charity. Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations, everyone, that's really awesome. I usually try to say everybody's name, but I might fail with all 14 of you. I wrote them down, but. Okay, so in an effort, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Where are you? Okay, they would usually do, Dean is usually here, and I'm like, she wasn't here, I wanted to make sure I didn't miss any students. Perfect, okay, thank you so much. All right, the other thing I'd like to mention is this beautiful trophy right here that I will attribute to our entire district, all of our administrators and principals and teachers. This is the, and our superintendent, this is the AASA School Superintendent's Association Award, named Melville School District a lighthouse school system. This distinction is given to districts who serve as models of positive change in education. So if we could give our administrators and teachers a hand. It's pretty impressive, so, thank you for all you do, everyone. All right, next up is our student reps like to give a little report about their schools, so Jenna, if you'd like to go first.
There are a lot of exciting things happening at Oakville as students excel at what they do. Winter Guard had their first competition on February 18th. They got first in their section and second overall. FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, competed at SLU on February 15th. They went against 30 schools from the St. Louis area, and 14 students qualified for state. The Junior Ring Dance was held on February 17th for the class of 2024. And lastly, French Club threw a party to celebrate Mardi Gras.
Great, thank you. All right, Eric.
After the first successful blood drive in the winter, we are hosting another one in the spring. There was a raffle fundraiser for Special Olympics to help raise money. We are hosting an international festival highlighting different cultures within our school and community. On the 21st and 22nd, students met with their TAP teachers and parents to discuss their classes for next year and everything we've done so far this year. Melville Spring Sports starts next week. Melville Student Leadership is bringing back Black-owned business lunch sales where students can buy treats and snacks during lunch, supporting local businesses like Sista Pops, Tasty Treats and Eats, and Pharaoh's Donuts.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Next up is open period for patron comments. We had no one sign up, so we will move on to number five, governance. First up will be Melville High School Dish Room Remodel Bid, Katie. And I'd also like to mention to the community and to anyone listening or watching that pre-meeting questions that are asked by the board are on eboards on the Melville website. If you would like to refer to any of those, the questions and answers are there online. Okay, Katie.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight to get approval for the dish room remodel over at Melville High School. I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to be over there, the space is very small for the operation they have over there. The remodel would knock out a wall and put new flooring, which is current floor right there, in there now, is, needs a little love. And then, new lights, new ceiling, just in the dish room area, but then repainting the whole kitchen space, including the dish room. So we received two bids for the project. I am recommending Brady Construction for the total sum of $80,900. I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Nothing? All right, if I could please get a motion to approve Brady Construction as the lowest qualified bidder for the dish room remodel at Melville High School.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Katie. Okay, next up is budget amendment for fiscal year '23. Marshall?
All right, update on the budget this year. You'll see on the schedules that we're moving from an operating gain of 1.4 million now to 3.3 million, and on the schedules, it outlines on the revenues and expenses, all the different various items that make that up, and in the agenda write-up, it discusses those as well. The revenues increase about 2.1 million, and it's from several things, like DESI adjusting the transportation revenue number, federal programs adjusting their revenues, which we also adjust expenses, and they offset interest rates continuing to go up, which really makes a significant difference on investment earnings, food service trends. So in the end, you know, you go through the list, and that's really where it stacks up at. So I guess, really with that, I'll open it up to questions or ask for approval.
Okay, yeah, no, there's, you did such a thorough job of explaining everything on eboards, that I think all the questions have already been answered, so thank you for that, Marshall. If I could please get a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, Prop S update, Dr. DeKemper.
Good evening. I will be sharing two presentations tonight, which I believe is reflective of the alignment between our strategic plan and Prop S. And to be clear, the safety and facilities component of the strategic plan would not be possible without Prop S. There are no green checks to add this month. We're currently in the planning phase gearing up towards a busy summer of construction. I'll go into detail about that a little bit tonight. Earlier this week, as some of you were able to join, the Facility Steering Committee met to tour some of the progress. We felt it was important to update the committee and show them some of the progress we've made towards the goals that they had set. If you think back, it was January of 2019 when this committee first started to meet, that's a long time ago. So we do feel it's important to continually engage them to get input and to help bring their voices in as we problem solve, given some of the construction dilemmas we're facing moving forward. One of the schools we looked at was Beerbomb Elementary, and I'm pleased to report that we remain on track. We are making progress with windows and walls, storefronts are being put in, plumbing fixtures are being installed, some of the painting is done, and there is a rooftop unit that we've learned will be delayed, is expected to arrive May 12th. We have contingency plans to make sure that we can address any humidity at the construction site, and that does not push us back any further at this time, but we're continuing to watch and plan around that rooftop. With Phase Two, we're continuing to respond to St. Louis County's adherence to egress capacity over occupant load for the required storm shelter. Met with our architects earlier this week, this is the revised bid schedule that we'll be moving to work towards, and given this continued planning, we're rethinking our timeframe for upcoming bids and the possible bundling of packages. Blades Elementary remains on track. Got to see that cabinets have come in and they've started installed, there's much excitement there. We're continuing to move towards phased occupancy. We have two speech rooms that are on the verge of opening up, that's brought an additional level of excitement to the building. And it's been really wet lately, so the ball field construction has slowed a bit, in fact, it looks like there's a pond right now. It's not been cooperative, but as the field starts to dry out, we know that three weeks follow will include working on the retaining wall, doing the preliminary dirt work and getting it finished, laser grading, fencing, irrigation, deere edge material, and installing conduits. Finally, Marshall has updated our numbers for the community and for you. That is our Prop S update.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I know Tori and I tagged along on the Facility Steering Committee tour the other night, and it was pretty awesome, so thanks for that. It was really nice to see the progress and the work being done. Next up is Strategic Plan Update, Safety. Dr. DeKemper.
Sure, and tonight I focus on facilities element of safety within the strategic plan. We know that the district wants to ensure that its facilities are safe and secure. A big part of this, that we've talked about a lot, is the completion of security vestibules. You know, some of those are now done, and with that, we're looking at cameras, buzzers, magnetic locks. Every building is a little different, so we're trying to be responsive to the design of those buildings, and we continue to use raptor technologies to screen those who are entering our vestibule. Air quality is also in the strategic plan, and we have pursued and received grant funding for air purifiers. These have been deployed throughout the district, they're in common spaces, they're in designated classrooms, they're in cafeterias. Every school was the recipient of these air purifiers. DHSS just announced that there is up to $150,000 worth of grant funding available for additional air quality projects, so we've been engaged in conversation with them. We're questioning, can this be for boilers, can this be for rooftop units, or is it limited to purifiers? I hope to update you more in the future about that, but we're being as aggressive as we can in ways to support the strategic plan. Asbestos and radon testing does continue in its cycled schedules, and we've completed some HVAC, and we plan on doing a little bit in the coming summer. Traffic flow is also within the strategic plan. The picture is actually a representation of a partnership between some of us in operations and parents who were at Beerbomb, and we lobbied St. Louis County to get the school speed limit sign installed, trying to close gaps where we identify them. And buildings are taking it upon themselves to continually try to improve traffic flow. We've done little things like we've been putting up a gate at a high school to allow off-hour access, and the bulk of our traffic flow projects really have to do with our Prop S projects at Roger, Oakville Elementary, with construction. Perimeter safety is also a focus. We continue to install keypads at various schools, wall windows up next. We are working on the timeline for upgraded locks and doors. Doors are hard to get right now, they're really expensive, so we will replace them in a targeted fashion as we bid. However, we believe that we can build a cycle to replace a number of our classroom and locks following installation of security. So that's our existing plan, and we're flexible having that. As mentioned in the eboard notes, the partnership between HR and IT is exploring the possible combination of staff ID badges and keyfolds. Encourage our staff to wear badges for identification purposes, and we believe that this will make them more relevant and useful to them on a daily basis. And we are currently labeling not only the exterior side of our doors and exits, but also the inside, so that that's matching, that number is following the recommendations of St. Louis County Police that we've worked with, clockwise fashion. So just today, we were painting signs for elementary to make sure that our exits are correct and consistent with ours. As mentioned before, we are installing safety glass following the installation of security vestibules. Our first phase of this has been completed, and we believe that it will add an added layer of protection to our schools. We're continuing to identify multiple places where that can take place. And exterior lighting is a focus, as we saw on our tour the other night. This is largely limited to the Prop S parking lots, however, at schools like Beasley Elementary, added flood lighting, some additional flood lighting. And then, we've been in conversation with Amber and E to have a street light put up at ball field exit of Oakville High School, based on feedback that we can see was past football seat. So that worked. And finally, all of our new construction is ADA accessible, and that would also include bathrooms at Beerbomb, Blades, Oakville High School. Point Elementary will have an accessible exit modified in a way that I think will be helpful, and we're looking at adding ADA improvements to access the playground. Update on the safety facility strategic.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? No, I would like to comment too, on our tour, I really, I mean, the security vestibules in the schools where they are done is huge, because people can no longer walk into a school and not, I mean, they have to be screened before they get past a locked door now, which is obviously very, very good for our safety of all of our children and staff. So, good job on that. And as to lighting, I mean, we witnessed it, Oakville Elementary has new lighting because of a new parking lot, Super Right, we went over to Blades, and literally, you can't see the ground where you're walking at night, it's so dark in those parking lots. So, more work to do, and I know we're trying to do it, but we continue to need everyone's support to get everything done.
And I was just gonna add, as one of the architects mentioned last night, and very noticeable, but not noticeable, that all of the work that's been done seems very seamless, and it fits like it was always supposed to be there, and I love that. And I love that. Just very purposeful in the way that it was planned out, and it feels like it's not a strange addition, but rather, you know, a part of the school that was always there, and we just upgraded it a little bit. So I think it's wonderful. Fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next up is Success Ready Network. Dr. Scott Clark and Dr. Jason Landher.
Good evening. Jason is unable to make it, so I'm going to do my best to cover his part as well. So keep the questions easy for me, please. So, all right. First, I want to thank Dr. Gaines for including Jason and I in this work. It is really exciting work, especially through my lens of the work that we've been doing at Mosaic over the past six years. So I'm going to share with you an update on Success Ready Students Network and give you kind of how it started and where we are currently within that work. I have a quote from here on the projector from our Commissioner of Education, and coming out of the pandemic, she was presenting the idea of reimagining what school can be and digging into competency-based learning, also looking at how we are currently assessing students, and is there a more effective way to understand our students' learning? And so through, she at the beginning, kind of tasked and put together a Success Ready Students work group that was commissioned by her and the Department of Education for the purpose of really looking into future-focused ideas in competency-based learning, and then also looking at statewide assessments and how we can reimagine what that would look like. So very exciting work, as you can imagine. And this work was really guided by these five questions, and you can see competency-based learning coming up quite a bit, but also in regards to professional development, and then also how we are assessing students. So the Success Ready Student Work Group partnered with various educational organizations and stakeholders across the state of Missouri to really kind of dig into research competency-based learning and plan next steps. And so as they were going through this work of planning and looking at phases, the Success Ready Students Network came out of that. And this is a very brief definition of what that work is, what the goal of that group is, and how that is going to help guide the work over the course of the next several years. So as I mentioned, during the research and planning phases, this was created. And again, the idea is that this is to develop policy that supports competency-based learning, and then also develop and build and design a competency-based assessment for learning that meets state and federal requirements. The other big component to this is launching the Innovation Zone One, which led to the Success Ready Students Network. The Innovation Zone is really broken up to three components. The first one is the System Design Zone, SDZ, and it's made up of 24 participating school districts from around the state of Missouri. We have several local districts here that are involved in that work, including Melville, but also Afton, Ladue, Lindbergh, Parkway, Pattonville, and Rittner. And these school districts are all districts that have shown support within competency-based learning and have used data to inform change. Below that is the Innovative Learning Design Zone. These are districts that are showing growth also in these areas, but will gain support from the schools that are participating in the System Design Zone. So in all, we have 54 school districts across the state of Missouri that are involved in this work, really being led, though, by those 24 participating school districts. The Collaborative Network Zone, this is comprised of state and local educational organizations, as you see 14 of them, also four Missouri universities, that are supporting the work of the other two groups, and then also the alignment of CBL practices, or competency-based learning practices. And in the conversations and as we have met, we've met both in person at different areas across the state, including Kansas City, here in Pattonville most recently. We've also have met virtually to discuss the work. And, you know, what is coming up through is knowledge, skills, and dispositions, but then how are those five key pieces that you see on the outside of this graphic supporting that work? And it's, obviously, you can see the assessment component, professional learning, policy, accreditation, and accountability, then the work through the innovation zones that support this. And I've broken down for you at your convenience each session and how that work looked, and what were our areas of focus in each of these sessions. And the first session when we met was in October, and we really kind of, our focus was really the history of competency-based learning in Missouri and defined the purposes of each of the innovative zones. We discussed components of CBL and reviewed examples, and then we also reviewed essentially innovative assessments of practices across all the states in the United States. In Session Two, we developed our theory of action. That was really our purpose. You know, what is our how? What is our what? What is our why? And through this work, we were really looking into what is a program or assessment that would give us information throughout the course of the year. Right now, MAP test captures a student's knowledge at the end of the year. We're looking at how can we capture a student's growth over the course of a school year? So having multiple benchmark assessments that could capture that growth. Being each assessment would be shorter in duration, but would give immediate feedback to teachers and educators on how that child is doing in the class. So it's not a summative approach. It's more of an opportunity for us, again, to show growth and be able to adapt instruction based off a student need. And so for me, that's extremely exciting that that information could be available to us instead of waiting several months afterwards. And so we looked at, what is that program? What kind of assessment would that look like? What are the attendant outcomes? Then how will that be achieved? That was in Session Two. As we got into Session Three, we began to focus more on accountability systems in different regions of our country, and then really about aligning mindsets around the scope of the work that we are doing. And being a part of that work, I think that we all were engaged participants when we met. We had similar thoughts and ideas, although at times we did have questions about what can assessment look like at the elementary level, middle school level, and then also the high school levels as well. As we have approached Session Four, we start again looking at more of kind of that personalized approach, especially around competency-based learning. And we began to design through all the previous sessions, what kind of information did we want to share with the Department of Education as we can put these action steps into life? We've come together in our philosophy and approach. Now we need action steps. And so we start working on what is called a demonstration waiver project, where we are presenting information to DESI and offering our suggestions for next steps. That was really the main focus for the next few sessions as we would meet. Same thing again, looking at Session Five, looking at that demonstration project, but then also how are these concepts transferred into real-world situations for our students? How can it help educators, again, support their students? And then finally, most recent session, we continued that work, looking at competency-based learning, looking at what are appropriate components of assessments in promoting student agency, and then also looking at creating and using proficiency scales in terms of student growth. And so we have our next session coming up on Monday in the Ozark region. Looking forward to that. This project is slated to continue throughout the course of this year and also be able to support districts through the 2026-2027 school year. And thank you very much for what I'd like to share.
Does anybody have any question? So what do you, I don't know exactly how to phrase this, but the Missouri State Board of Education tasked DESI with doing this study, sort of, right?
Yes.
So do you foresee things changing? Do you, I mean, do you think that this will make a difference?
I didn't know the work will make a difference. I'm going to be cautiously optimistic. You know, I think that when we look at, I'm going to speak on my experience at Mosaic, and we see when we're gathering information, looking at data, and it's real time for us, we can make adjustments right then and there. So for us, for MAP test, when it comes to us several months later, we can look at historical data. We can look at pockets of maybe some patterns of things that are happening, but on an individual basis, sometimes that's difficult. So when we have real-time information, that is very helpful for us. So for me, that is the biggest piece that I'm very hopeful for.
Yeah, that's exciting to see that instead of the loss of...
You know, and just taking time, and when we are taking time to assess a student, there has to be purpose to it, right? And the purpose is that we are learning about our students' needs. And so taking that information and being able to adapt to their needs, be able to revise our instruction, that is the point of collecting that data. And so when it's real time, that's what we need.
Right. Yeah, that is awesome. I hope it moves forward.
I do, too.
Dr. Clark, is part of the commiseration between you and the, you know...
You know, for me, probably the biggest piece is that across the state, there is this desire to increase learner agency. There's a desire that we want to give voice and choice to our students. To me, that was the biggest piece that really stood out. You know, you kind of think of that, some of these innovative practices are sometimes just within St. Louis and maybe Kansas City, but we're seeing these practices take place throughout the state, and we see, I would say, very much a push to move forward with this work. And so I would say there's a lot of champions in our, excuse me, a lot of champions in our state that are leading this work in their districts. I would also like to say that I think that we should be very proud of the work that we're doing in our district. I see that our work is standing out in our state, and I think it's being recognized by others. So, you know, I'm very proud of the work that our teachers and our administrators that are, you know, every day that are doing in our classrooms. So that is a big piece that stands out for me.
More?
How are you, sir?
Yes, and we have heard that from other retired superintendents now that have come in and visited, and they were blown away by our personalized learning practices and all the great work you guys are doing, so.
He's the brain of the outfit, so, I mean...
Way to go, Jason.
I'm just the looks.
Following his lead from Mosaic, the high school inside, those departments I already covered.
His timing is impeccable.
It is.
It's true. It's true.
All right. But thank you for your work, and this is exciting and looking forward to...
More.
More.
Yeah, we look forward to providing you updates.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Student Achievement. Washington Middle School, Kelly Roberts and Mr. Murphy. And I don't, you can, you'll have to introduce everybody else if you don't mind. Sorry.
Good evening. Yes, we have a team here tonight with us. Bill Murphy, our assistant. We also have Katie McMullin. She is our ELA interventionist, our ELA curriculum coordinator, or curriculum department chair. That's the word I'm looking for. Thank you. And also a part of the MTSS team. And we have Jill Burstein, who is our math interventionist and also our MTSS member. So a lot of the data that we've been collecting this year has been analyzed by these two weeks, so better to speak to it than to... So we'll have a part tonight. So again, thank you for having us this evening. I want to start out first by going over our mission statement at Washington. This was created with feedback from students and staff members when we were asking them, what do you want in your school environment? So that's something that we continue to take feedback on, continue to look at each and every year. Historical enrollment, we have 422 students. We are the smallest of the four middle schools. Next year, we should see a little bit of a bump. Our eighth graders who will be graduating is our smallest class, and our incoming sixth graders are a little bit larger, not too large, but we should see a little bit of an increase from 422. So the main part of this evening is going to be talking about our school improvement plan. We have six goals on our school improvement plan that we've been working on this past school year. When we're thinking about, or we're looking at our student achievement goals, we have two of them. The first is to increase our grade level proficiency for every student in the area of ELA and math. And our second goal is utilizing the frameworks of our MTSS team to provide those academic supports for students in those Tier Two and Tier Three. So we have a fantastic MTSS team at Washington. It's comprised of a variety of our staff members, from administration to counselors to interventionists, to SSD coordinators, and we also utilize our coaches as well to help and support us. So the first goal, the overarching goal of this team, is first to keep that 80% attainment of Tier One. That was our focus last year, is really tightening up our Tier One universals and supports at Washington. Our second is the development and the use of a data dashboard, which we'll dive into in just a bit. And the third, which is something that this team has really focused on, is creating those intervention groups, utilizing the data to help support students in Tier Two interventions, and if needed, a Tier Three intervention. So our data dashboard, this has been what our MTSS team had been creating all last school year. There's a lot of just different pieces, and we wanted to make sure it can be utilized by all staff. That was the goal, and make sure we have accurate and good data. So we had a wide variety of those dashboards. We finally landed on one, and we implemented it and rolled that out this school year. Every staff member has access to it. Every student is represented on the dashboard. So just an overall of what you would see if you were in our dashboard. So there's a piece for the assessment data that would be in the area of ELA, math, science, and social studies, attendance, if a student has had a tiered support, and if so, when was the tier support? And then diving even further, you can pull up their plans in Panorama. So all their detailed plans are in there. Panorama data, discipline, and any current services a student may be receiving. All these pieces are what the team looks at and also what each teacher looks at before making a decision how we're going to support our students the best we can. One part, too, is common assessments, and that's part of our data piece. This year, we've been very fortunate. When Mr. Murphy was creating or helping to create our master schedule, he found a way to find time for all of our teachers to have content area time off together to plan and team. And that has been, it's been a game changer for us this year. So during that time, our content area teams have been working together with our interventionists, with our administrators, and they have been really tightening up their practices, but also creating a common assessment that they're given throughout sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in each of the core areas. And what they did is they unpacked those standards together. They use their background knowledge of what is some, what are the topics that students don't always get, looking at map item benchmarks, how often are these things coming up? And then from there, talking about their instructional practices as they create these assessments. During this time, they're also practicing grading together, common language. So just really getting just more of commonality throughout all the grade levels in the content areas. So this is an example. ELA came together, and this was over a period of time, so this didn't happen overnight. The ELA department, you know, came together and with all those things we said, unpacked those standards and landed on the RL 1A standard. We teach everything else, but that's what they're really focusing on, we keep coming back to, and we're taking that data, and those students who aren't quite getting it, we're getting them some support, and we're continuing to do that cycle. A different-looking one would be math. Math is a little different with the fact that it's not cyclical like ELA. There's lots of skills, so those have a little more bulky items that we're looking at. However, with that said, what we're finding when we're going through this is some of our standards that aren't being addressed in middle school is what the students really need, is those background skills and knowledge that are kind of tripping them up as we're getting to some of this. So it's helping us then focus on how do we support our students best? So we're going to go ahead and get into that data then.
All right, again, I'm Katie McMullin, the ELA interventionist at Washington Middle School. Thank you so much for letting me come and speak with you guys today to our ELA data. So what you see in front of you is our start benchmark, which is our reading assessment that we take three times a year. The lighter blue bar, if you will, will be the scores that the students had in the fall. The dark blue bar would be the scores that the students have had thus far in the winter. We'll take it again in the springtime. Sixth grade overall has shown some growth.
Sixth grade overall has shown some growth from the average of a 5.5 instructional reading level in the fall to a 6.1 instructional reading level in the winter. Seventh grade has also, again, continued to show growth. They have shown a growth of 6.1 instructional level in the fall to a 6.6 instructional level in the winter. Eighth grade has done a fantastic job. They also have shown growth in this area with regard to instructional reading level. They started out as an average as a 6.9 and have grown to that 7.7 instructional reading level. This increase, of course, is due in part to the Tier One instructional practices that the classroom teachers implement on a daily basis. Additionally, a lot of these kiddos have had an opportunity to work with myself, either pushing in to help increase those Tier One supports, or being pulled out for Tier Two or even Tier Three supplemental instruction. This particular slide focuses more specifically on that common assessment standard. This is kind of representative from our STAR data. So what you're going to find here, or what you're going to see, is that based on the winter assessment for RL-1A, sixth grade is currently working with roughly 58% of the students are at mastery of that particular standard. In seventh grade, we're working with 45% of our kiddos at mastery, and then in eighth grade, we are currently at 36% mastery. The big thing to know and understand is, of course, that that rigor continues to increase as they go from sixth to seventh to eighth grade. Additionally, what this shows is that there is still most certainly room for us to continue to collaborate and increase those scores even more as we move into the spring assessment window.
Good evening, I'm Jill Burstein. I am the math interventionist at Washington Middle School. My data looks a lot different, we're using a whole different benchmark. It's IXL. Our goal is for kids by winter to have increased on grade level, up 50 points by the end of the year, 100 points. You can see right now, the kids in, from sixth and seventh grade have grown that are on or above grade level, there has been growth. However, if you look at our eighth grade, it's not quite so pretty, and that's something that now that we do have that winter data, we need to dig into and see what's happening in the eighth grade. Something isn't working, and what can we do to fix it? I did also want to just give you some numbers. Again, from fall to winter, we're hoping that they grow by 50 points. The sixth grade, we grew from 455 to 512, that's a difference of 57. Seventh grade from 537 to 578, a difference of 41. And in eighth grade, from 603 to 648, a difference of 45. On the next slide, you will see that this is IXL growth fall to winter, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Most of our kids are showing growth, very few have shown zero growth or declined. We know for a fact that our kids are not unlearning or not learning at all. So some of these, we might call them the, the mad clickers, it's one of those days, but it's very few if you look. Again, eighth grade though, is our, our tricky one. They are much higher. Sixth grade is looking much better, and then seventh is a little bit more. One celebration I did really enjoy when I was just starting to go through the data is that 30% of our overall WMS population has shown growth of one year or more by the winter benchmark, which we're talking, some kids have shown two and a half years of growth, some have shown a year and a half of growth. So that was pretty good to see after the past several years. This next slide is talking about our Tier Two interventions. Right now, as far as what I am doing, is we are trying to look at the data on the data dashboard, see which children are needing the interventions, obviously going through, looking at the data, looking at their MAP, looking at their common assessment scores, looking at their IXL scores. With that, I have currently going a group for operations with decimals, so your numbers and operations standard. We also have operations with integers, that would be another group, again, in your numbers and operations. Another one with percents, so ratios and proportions within that standard, actually two, we have two groups for percents. And we've had a group for solving equations, linear equations, graphing linear equations is another group, looking to add another one on just understanding fractions, because we're seeing a lot of these sixth graders are missing things clearly straight out of third and fourth grade, which would have been back when they were at home. So to try and push them so that now they can get to the standards that are in sixth grade and be successful at them.
Another big piece to the success of our Tier One instruction is our continued use of our co-taught models across all grade levels. We continue to offer these for our math, ELA, and social studies. In social studies, we've actually increased our sections of co-taught with the growing population of EL students that we have. We have 22 different languages now at Washington Middle School, so the support for them has been, the need for the support for them has been greater than ever. The only, the only, only situation here where we do not have a co-taught model is in our academy, and that's just due to staffing shortages, but we hope that we can remedy that soon. Of course, all of this is impossible unless we're feeling like we're belonging and we're part of a family. So one of our goals is to increase that sense of belonging, increase that sense of community in our school. One big focus here has been for our staff. We know we want to create that sense of belonging for our students, but supporting our staff so that they can deliver these experiences and support the kids the way that they're supposed to has been a priority for us. We've put together a staff Zen Zone, we have staff community circles, we continue to offer more spirit days, teacher participation in school events, unofficial after-school gatherings. We have a rejuvenated PTO and a staff happy note system. And you can see through our fall panorama data that our staff belonging, sense of belonging, and sense of well-being continues to rise. That's also reflected in our student data, as we continue to bring back more school events, some of those traditional events that had gone by the wayside. During our, what we've started to call our ABCD half-days, we focus on the Washington Way, our respect, responsibility, and readiness. We talk with kids about their panorama data, their academic data, and our universal expectations. And we arrange our small groups for small group support as well through our SEL interventionist. A lot of this belonging comes from the clubs and opportunities we offer in our extracurriculars. We have such a, such a large population that wants to be involved, that we've had some logistical problems with making sure that we have room for everyone, which is a good problem to have. So that's been exciting to see more and more kids want to participate in these different activities. So we look forward to continuing to offer and expand these opportunities for our students and staff, and we appreciate the time you guys have given to us tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Your data and information is very impressive. I love all your explanations of how you're tracking the kids and their growth, and we love seeing all that, and like that you're addressing where you see a problem and you're owning up to it, and not, not that you personally, but that you're taking the time to figure out how we can help those kids. So thank you, thank you to all of your staff. Thanks. Okay, next up is Oakville Middle. Mike Salzman and Dr. Beatt.
I still have to make sure I'm pronouncing it correct, so. Good evening, thank you for letting us present tonight. When looking at our mission statement, we really want to challenge our students to progress academically, socially, and emotionally. And we do this by these 70-plus staff members. They make Oakville Middle School a special place to work and also a special place to be a student and to learn. If you look at our enrollment data, right now, we have 649 students. Over the last 10 years, we've been in the 600s with a high of 698 in 2021. And then broken down by grade level, we have 212 sixth-grade students, 227 seventh-grade students, and 210 eighth-grade students. We're projected to have 180 incoming sixth-grade students next year, but those numbers always seem to increase as we go through the summer months. Our average daily attendance this year is at 92.7%. And if you look at our demographics, we have 14% of our students have an IEP, 9% of our students are EL, 15% of our students free and reduce lunch, and 7% of our students have been identified as gifted students. This year, in eighth grade, we have 70 of our students taking Spanish One for a high school credit, which is equivalent of about a third of our eighth-grade students. And then likewise for Algebra One, we have 79 students taking Algebra One for a high school credit, and that's almost 38% of our eighth-grade students. So we're proud that we have a chance to offer that to our students, to get that credit or two credits going into high school. Tonight, we're going to focus on four of our B-SIP goals. They include academic achievement, training our new teachers in our systems, choice-based PD, and developing a positive climate at Oakville Middle School. So our first goal when we're looking at academic achievement, what have we done so far this year to help with that? We're in the process of training all of our teachers on MTSS and helping them identify Tier One, Two, and Three supports. Our teachers look at benchmark data during their department meetings, and then we also use additional advisory time to help with our Tier Two and Tier Three students, and that's usually with our interventionist, pulling students out during advisory, working with them in small groups. This is Kristin Santiskoy, she's our ELA interventionist. She currently services about 40 students working on reading fluency, comprehension, grammar, and writing skills. And like WMS, this is some of our STAR data from ELA with these 40 students, looking at our fall benchmark scores compared to our winter benchmark scores. And we're proud that most of our students in this group increased their reading level, at least by one grade level, some more than that. This is Stacy Hager, she is our math interventionist. She works with about 70 to 80 students at a time, working on math facts, math fluency, and number cents. And here again, if you look at some of the data from the fall to the winter, you can see the students that she worked with, about 70 students, they had an average growth percentage rate of 12.7%. And then she's also working with some of these students in different math strands, number cents, algebraic thinking, and fractions. We've seen a huge increase in fractions.
Good evening, everybody. So obviously, the challenges that the last couple of years have faced, one of the areas in which we felt we needed to address was just kind of onboarding with our new staff. The last couple of years, anyone who was hired into the building spent a lot of that time kind of segregated from the population, so we kind of thought, what can we do to, to make sure that we are shoring up our onboarding of new staff? So we kind of started this process last spring. We surveyed our first and second-year teachers, just kind of asked them, now that you've got a year or two under your belt, what do you wish you would have known walking into OMS that you now know? So we took that data, took those survey responses, we were able to create a new teacher handbook, and then we were able to provide for all of our, our new staff that kind of explained to them what we do at Oakville Middle, along with some pertinent district information, just a very helpful guide for them as they come aboard. We have a monthly meetings with our new teachers, we have a group that's led by some of our veteran teachers. They meet monthly and talk about different pertinent topics, you know, talk about parent-teacher conferences around those times of year, just to help our new, our new staff with some onboarding. One of the other areas we wanted to focus on was just making sure our PD for our, our staff is as meaningful as possible. So we kind of took a leap this year and implemented something new, some personalized interest-based PD. We've got six cohorts of teachers that are meeting during our early release days, studying aspiring leadership, SEL and equity, personalized learning, restorative practices, and then just some maximizing of instructional time. We have some book studies that are going on, we've got some guest speakers that have come in, all kind of aligned to the timeline on the bottom here, leading up to a presentation in the spring where all of our cohorts can present to the staff on what they've learned and what their findings have been. Feedback from staff has been very positive this year. I think we'll take this feedback and hopefully build on it next year, but I think our staff has appreciated the opportunity to choose what they're learning, what's relevant to them in their classrooms, and being able to, you know, have a little bit of choice in, in where we go. Positive climate, I think, is a point of pride at Oakville Middle School. Being new to Oakville Middle School this year, it's definitely something that I've noticed, but it's always an area that we want to improve upon. So this year, we really focused on including a school climate that's very positive, raises awareness regarding equity and anti-bias, and some inclusive practices. So we've done that through a variety of, of modes. One of them, Spartan shout-outs, Ms. Kelly's in the, in the crowd tonight, she's had a huge part in this, but essentially, our students have the opportunity to write notes to their teachers about what they appreciate, things that they like about those teachers. We post them in our conference room, teachers come in every week, and they're able to see what their kids are saying or thinking, feeling about, about them as teachers. We, we tried early on in the year to introduce our new staff to not only our, our school community, but also the wider Oakville community. Did this on social media, had some good pictures taken and some introductions of our staff. We've also tried to really increase the number of positive referrals. It's one of the things I'm probably most proud of this year. Every week, we've got a great partnership with Chick-fil-A, students get a Chick-fil-A sandwich, we send home a note about the great things their students are doing. You can see from the response here, it means a lot to the parents and the, and the students. And then we've got got-caught winners. These are our kids who get caught doing something positive. Mr. Salzman has graciously donated his wall in his office to be the wall of fame. Kids get to come down to the office, sign the wall of fame, and they, they have fun with it. And in the classroom, we're also trying to incorporate some best practices. One of the things that our cultural awareness committee has done this year is implemented an activity in which every student basically created a flipgrid video that they could share that, that explained what their name means to them. Our name is one of the most personal things that we all have, and sometimes they're mispronounced. I, I know that maybe better than most people in this room, but it's just something that our, our students were able to do, to kind of show a little vulnerability and, and get to know one another in terms of cultural awareness. So the data shows that this has been successful. 84% of our students have said that they feel school is fair for them regardless of their culture, background, or ethnicity. 91% of our students feel that the adults are treating them fairly in the building regardless of any race, ethnicity, culture, background. And our staff as well has shown a lot of growth in this from winter last year, perceptions of the social and learning climate have gone up 15%, and then 16% in the overall staff perceptions of our own professional well-being. So we're very proud of that.
So another point of pride is just the 20-plus clubs we offer at Oakville Middle School, anything from athletic clubs to teen police breakout club, book battles. We're firm believers in that if students are active after school, they're going to do better in school, so we try to offer as many clubs as possible. Also, another point of pride is just the community outreach that's happened at Oakville Middle School this year. We sponsored the Holly Foley Blood Drive, participated and filled the truck up. We're trying to get our families more involved this year with a pancake night next week, we're having a skating night, and we have a very active PTO. We had over 400 students attend our fall festival, and right now, we're working on our lock-in, which will take place this spring. So I know Mr. McKelvey's had the pleasure of walking the halls of Oakville Middle School and maybe even toured my office once or twice, but we invite all of you to come up to Oakville Middle School and, and tour Oakville Middle School.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for all the data and information. We appreciate it, and thank you to your staff for all they do. And again, any questions that we, we've already asked questions, and they're on e-boards.
Want to say one more thing. Congratulations, Mr. Salzman, on 30 years with the Melville School District. I'm so glad we got you.
Okay, next is action items by consent. Does anyone need to pull anything? All right, if I can get a motion to approve action items by consent, A through H.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, we did not have anybody sign up for open period of patron comments for non-agenda items, so Gene, if you could put us into closed session.
Motion in our closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings, other items under the Missouri revised statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, particular employees, section 610.0213, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, applications for employment, section 610.02113, legal action, causes of action or litigation, section 610.0211, and section 610.0218.
Hey, Jeff?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Peggy, yes. Motion carries six, zero. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six...